Good evening and welcome to the December 10th, 2020, special meeting of the Board of Education. The purpose of our meeting this evening, which is a special meeting, is to receive our CEO's FY22 budget presentation and to for the board to compute items that were left over from our last board meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices to avoid interfering with the board's meeting. We do have the capacity, something that the Board of Education is very proud of, to have simultaneous interpretation of our proceedings for the convenience of our public. We have Mr. Lopez who will indicate that capacity to the public now. I'll ask him to please do so.
Thank you. Buenas tardes y gracias por acompañarnos esta noche a nuestra reunión de la Junta Educativa y la presentación del presupuesto para el año fiscal 2022. Si usted desea escuchar esta reunión en español, por favor llame al número 508-924-5155. De nuevo, si usted desea escuchar esta reunión en español, por favor llame al número 508-924-5155. Muchas gracias por acompañarnos esta noche.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. And we also have, for the convenience of our public, sign language interpretation being provided by Ms. Barbara Chalker. So Ms. Chalker, thank you so much for the service that you are providing. At this point, colleagues, I would like to ask Ms. Boozer Strutter to please lead us in our board's prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chair. Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with wisdom, love, and understanding. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, colleague. At this point, Ms. Berkeley, our board staff, I'm going to ask you to please call the roll. But before you do so, I want to thank you and Ms. King on behalf of the board for your preparing for the board meeting tonight as always. Thank you all very much. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Good evening, Board members and staff. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Mrs. Ahmed.
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Here.
Mr. Burrows.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Montero.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mrs. Queen. I'll come back. Mrs. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Thornton.
Present.
Mrs. Queen.
I'm present, but I was muted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. And thank you, colleagues. At this point, would you turn your attention to the agenda? And I'll receive a motion to adopt the agenda or any modifications.
Salute.
It's a proper movement. Proper movement seconded by Ms. Williams. Who seconded, raise your hand if you see. Mr. Thomas. Any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Go, Ms. King, let the record reflect that the board unanimously adopted its agenda for December 10th, 2020. Colleagues, if you would now turn your attention to the minutes of the board's meeting of November 12th. And I'll receive now a motion to adopt or any modifications.
Mr. Chair, I move approval with a modification. I voted, as far as I recall, I voted no on item 5.4, but it's reflected in the minutes as an abstention.
Okay. Let me, Ms. Ahmed is moving with one modification. Did I get a second? Give me a second, someone.
Second.
Ms. 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 Queen seconds Ms. Ahmed with the one modification. I don't hear any objection to the modification of changing Ms. Ahmed's vote as indicated. With that modification and seeing no other modifications, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
For those opposing. I don't see, Ms. King, any objections to the adoption of the minutes with that one modification. And let the record reflect that it's unanimous as modified. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. If I, just for clarification, if I could just record who gave the second on Ms. Ahmed's motion?
It was Ms. Queen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, at this point, I need to welcome our new board members to the to the Board of Education. They have been sworn in thanks to the excellent work of the clerk of court and our staff, Ms. King and her staff, who supported the swearing in of our new board members. So I want to welcome on behalf of the board, Ms. Shayla Adams Stafford. We welcome you, colleague, to the Board of Education. And I also want to wrap, Mr. Miss Stafford, Adam Stafford represents District Four. I would look forward to your service on the Board of Education, colleague. We also have another new board member joining us in Mr. Kenneth Harris, who represents District Seven. My old district in the old days. So welcome, Brother Harris, and look forward to your service on the Board of Education. We also have returning new board members. They don't need any introduction, but I do want to welcome them back as newly elected board members. And that's Ms. Ms. Ahmed. Ms. Ahmed, welcome back to the board. Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray, welcome back to the Board of Education. And Vice Chair, Mr. Burrows, welcome back to the to the Board of Education. We thank you all for your willingness to return to the board and serve the people of Prince George County. I also want to recognize, because we depend upon them so heavily for our money and other kinds of things, the new leadership of the county council. And indicate to them in this space, Mr. Hawkins, who's the new chair of the county council, and Mr. Varys, who's the new vice chair of the county council. The fact that the board looks forward to them for the year that we will serve together. Want to thank Mr. Turner, who is outgoing chair, and Mr. Jackson, outgoing vice chair, for their service to the board. I will not be continuing as chairman of the Board of Education, so I won't have the opportunity to serve with Ms. Adams Stafford, Mr. Harrison, and our board. And I've extended my resignation to the county executive. My resignation will take effect January 8th. Obviously, between now and then, I will do all that I can to facilitate the transition and leadership of the board, to make sure there is no interruption in the great work that this board has done over the past two years. I won't have any more to say about that, and I don't expect you all to respond at this point, because it's something that you did not know until tonight. But I'm sure that we'll have a chance to talk about transition and the ways that I can, if necessary, support the Board of Education. At this point, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. And as Ms. Williams requested, we will treat these separately. The first agenda is item 3.1, is a recommendation.
Dr. Thornton. I'm sorry, just a point of clarification. I believe we still have item 1.7.
Oh, yeah.
The CEO of the Board.
Good Lord. The purpose of our meeting. Dr. Goldson, you see, I got excited and all.
Yeah, I see.
I'm sorry, you know, it's an emotional time for me. But anyway, Dr. Goldson, the purpose of the meeting primarily was to use your presentation, so. I will go next to Dr. Goldson's Executive Officer Report, and she'll deal with that in whatever way she deems appropriate. Dr. Goldson.
Yes. Good evening, thank you, Dr. Thornton. Good evening. Last week, I announced the delay in the distribution of a survey to parents about their preferences for the remainder of the school year, whether to have their child continue distance learning or shift to a hybrid scheduled to start the second semester in February. In light of the surge statewide in positive COVID-19 cases, it is best that we continue distance learning until further notice. This means that we are unlikely to begin hybrid learning in February, although I have not ruled out resuming in-person instruction for small groups of students. Despite the necessity of school closures, I am aware of the impact it's having on our students and families. We will be ramping up resources for students in special education and our English language learners. We're also looking at how to better address the social and emotional needs of our students. For the time being, we will remain at stage one levels in terms of our operating status. We are taking numerous steps to ensure your health, safety, and well-being during this time. Last month, we returned some designated employees to full-time telework status. Schools and offices remain open under social distancing guidelines, facial covering mandates, and use of personal protective equipment with visits by appointment only. In the interest of transparency, we have also created an online database that lists COVID-related building closures as well as county COVID-19 statistics. Prince George's County Public Schools will consider implementation of small group instruction by identifying grade levels and/or designated populations of students such as special education and/or English language learners when several factors are met, such as the percent of positive cases that fall between 3.1% to 5%, infection rates that fall between 0.9% to 1.10%, and the average daily case rate per 100,000 population falls between 5 to 10. Unfortunately, right now, we are exceeding all three of those categories. These are not the sole determining factors, but are major indicators that allow us to safely begin consideration for in-person learning. Even though we are continuing with distance learning, staff is working to prepare our buildings for in-person learning. I'd like to thank Mr. Barry Stanton, our Chief of Operations, and the Building Services Staff for all they have done thus far to prepare for the reopening of school. The distribution of touchless thermometers to all schools was distributed by our warehouse supply staff. Signage placement for social distancing was completed by safety and security staff with support from the Building Services Supervisors. Hand sanitizer machines with hand sanitizer distribution and placement completed by our Building Services and Warehouse Staff. Acquisition of external vendors to conduct air quality assessments and to make sure building airflow meets the CDC guidelines was handled by our Environmental Services and Purchasing Department. And installation of plexiglass in the cafeteria point-of-sale area and MIR-13 air filters completed by our Building Services Staff. Lastly, I'd like to thank the over 10,000 employees that joined the Employee Town Hall last week and are working extremely hard to support our families during distance learning to help to improve it daily. All of the senior class officers who gave me their thoughts about graduation, P-grass, executive board members who shared ways we can support students academically, and our PTSA leaders who gave recommendations for improvement and support to families. I truly appreciate the input and will begin working on ways to implement your recommendations. Please continue to follow guidelines around wearing a mask, staying six feet apart, traveling only for essential purposes, and no large gatherings. Our behavior controls our COVID-19 positivity rate. Have a safe and quiet winter break. This concludes the CEO report.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson, for your report, and thank you for collectively keeping the board informed. But more importantly, for reaching out and making yourself available individually to board members as individuals.
I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, yes, please. And I want to just say that, Dr. Goldson, please continue to do that. And we will now entertain questions from board members. Ms. Stafford.
First of all, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Dr. Goldson, for that awesome presentation. And I wanted to just ask quickly, I I know that you all are working on air quality reports. And I wanted to know, when did you expect for those air quality reports to be completed?
Prior to the winter break.
Okay, okay, great. So I also wanted to move, I wanted to make a motion also, Dr. Thornton.
Please.
Okay. I wanted to move to create a Board of Education ad hoc COVID-19 committee, which I will chair, which will focus on the following. Number one, the core safety protocols that are being put into place, including training, staff training, supplies needed, signage, and sanitation. Also, understanding the plan for COVID response if a student or a parent contracts the virus. The timeline for building preparation. Also, the support for special needs students, which Dr. Goldson talked about a bit here, but going into more detail with how we're supporting those students. And also, supporting the emotional well-being of students as they return to in-person learning and the actual plan for the model for learning as students return, whether there would be a hybrid model description, staffing changes, and scheduling changes. And so I just want to say I applaud the efforts of the administration so far. And I think that it's time to also mirror some of the best practices of boards in our region and across the country in creating this committee, which would consist of not only board members, but administration, our labor partners, students, parents, and teachers and principals as well.
Muted yourself, Board Member Adam Stafford.
I think it would be great for this committee to have a standing place on the agenda so we can continue to inform the public and stakeholders of all of the many updates on the progress at every board meeting, because I think this is one of the most critical issues of our time. And we want to, you know, continue to ensure that students are learned and our PGCPS family is safe.
Thank you, my colleague. We do have, it's obviously the issue that you raised is a very, very important one. We do have a process for the establishment of such committees, a policy development process. I don't know if this raises rises to the level of our policy development, but it might. So we do have a specific procedure for developing such committees and processes. The board might want to modify that. I just wanted to make that point. But that is a motion that you're making. And if I hear a second, it will be discussed by the board.
Yep, Dr. Thornton, I'd like to second that motion. Thank you.
So so colleagues, that is a motion, as you heard it, on the floor that has been seconded. I did provide the background in terms of how we handle policy matters, but are there any other discussion? Now, Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I just wanted to note that the policy does refer to focus work groups, but I don't know that it necessarily speaks to the same process that we do with focus work groups for ad hoc committees. So I just wanted to put that in there. I think this is, frankly, it's a good idea. It's something that we should be keeping on track of on a regular basis at every board meeting until we are at a place of of full safety for students. So that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Dr. Goldson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So we do, I do, provide an update to our Board of Education members in a variety of ways and to our community. First, in our executive leadership team, we meet in COVID-19 meetings weekly. Those summaries of those meetings I provide to all Board of Education members. And that information is received through your PGCPS email. I do provide updates to our community through my opening remarks in our Board of Education meetings. Our reopening guide, which actually addresses, I think, that very last question that you mentioned, can be found on page 37 of our reopening guide around the definition of the hybrid model and what that would look like, or examples or samples that are in that reopening guide. And then my quick notes, I don't know what numbers these were, but around safety protocols and the COVID response around students or parents if they are found positive. We have created a guide for the reopening of school that we just reviewed with our labor partners on Wednesday to receive their input. We are putting their recommendations into a document, in the document we presented to them. And once we have put in their recommendations, we will share with Board of Education members and then the process of our community. So I would never want anyone to believe that we had not done our due diligence in keeping our community informed as well as Board of Education members through this entire process. And we've done this process since March, where we do keep our Board of Board Members informed a little bit even more detail than we do the public. So thank you, Dr. Thornton, for the opportunity to share that information.
Thank you. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, did you seek to be recognized? Ms. King, can you help me? Ms. Boozer Strutter, until I come back to Ms. Williams.
Yeah, I think Ms. Williams, oh, she's speaking, but she froze. Can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was having trouble with my earphones. I'm sorry. Welcome, Ms. Adam Stafford. I am so glad to have you on the board. This is so exciting. And I think that the points that you brought up were very much, they're important to the community to let everyone know what we're doing. I would just ask a question to Ms. Adam Stafford to answer. What does what does that look like to you? Meaning, are you looking to amend the agenda to add a a place where a a group that you mentioned could have a place on the standing agenda? Because that's one thing that we would have to change in policy. And then also, Ms. Ahmed brought up the focus work group, and there's a process for us to create such a group. So I'd just like to just get a little bit more detail as to what you might think, what you're suggesting would look like.
Yeah.
From a board perspective.
Yes. So, you know, I I want to just say, Dr. Goldson is doing such a great job with her team and doing all of this great work as she has detailed. And this would just be an item on our agenda every month where we can showcase what's happening, be, you know, provide that transparency for families and communities that may not be able to attend some of the town halls and and receive some of the messaging that they're putting out and sharing with the community, would just be another avenue for us to share that information with the public. But, you know, we don't want to, this isn't anything to take away from what they're already doing and the great work that she's, that they've been engaging in, as she said, since March. So this would be just another forum and a way for us to to inform and keep keep the community abreast of what's happening and just ask questions.
Okay, colleagues.
I just have one little comment. I think it's a great idea. I would love to work with you to sort of evolve this idea to something that works with the process that we have, meaning finding a place on the agenda and developing the focus work group so that we all can review and and go through that process. And so unfortunately, I won't be supporting that motion today because I think we need to evolve it a little bit and sort of work with the process that we have in place. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Boozer Strutter, and then hopefully we can vote, colleagues, and go on. Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Adam Stafford. And, you know, thank you for diving right into these important issues. And, I mean, I I just wanted to raise that the the amount of work it's taking for Dr. Goldson to manage her, bring all of her experts together with the data they research. I would be very concerned about a second set of data and confusion to the public. So if you, in this work, could consider if this is just more about communication concerns or avenues of that of whatever concerns concerns you're having, I would be very mindful of of bringing in a new set of folks who do not have this expertise at this this critical juncture and especially how well-served our community has has been. We have more than 10,000 attendees at town halls. We have about 150 members of the public with us this evening. We have communications through schools. So I think I would just, I I would just caution having a second set of messaging out there through COVID. Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, let's move to a vote on this. It's not a, I don't want to be flippant about it because it is a, it's a major issue that I I think we'd have to work with if, I won't, I won't prejudge it. Let's let's move to a vote. Ms. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed.
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
No.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Mr. Montero.
No.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Abstain.
Mrs. Queen. Mrs. Shepherd.
Abstain.
Did you say abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine.
Uh, no.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Dr. Thornton.
No.
Six ayes, five nays, two abstentions, and one absent.
Okay. So it receives a majority vote, and we'll try to see what that what that means working with Dr. Goldson and our staff.
A point of, point of clarification, Dr. Thornton. I think this would require eight votes voting yay, uh, voting aye, given that we only have six, the motion did not pass.
You said eight votes?
The number of votes required to pass was eight, however, it only received six. So the motion did not pass.
Okay, it requires eight votes and not a majority. Okay, didn't, I didn't recall that. Okay, very good then. But let's not, Ms. Adam Stafford, it did not pass. Let's let's continue to work on it because I think there's an intent that everybody recognizes. So please reach out to Dr. Goldson and and me and as long as I'm chairing, Mr. Burrows, if we're trying to make something happen. And Mr. Chair. I think you had, yes.
I don't see Ms. Queen on the line.
That's true.
I think she might have gotten disconnected.
Ms. King, can you have you and Ms. Berkeley work to try and get Ms. King, Ms. Queen back? She may be having technical problems and so on certain.
Yeah, she is having technical difficulties. We're working to resolve them.
Okay. Hopefully, we can do that before we get to another vote. Okay.
And I would like to procedurally split my yes vote to a no vote as a matter of record. And I might move to reconsider once Ms. Queen is back.
Very good, sir. So, Ms. King, make that a, Ms. Berkeley, make that a adjustment. And we will now, Dr. Goldson, move to your budget presentation.
This is Dr. Thornton. Board Member Williams has her hand up.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to let board colleague Adam Stafford that I still love to work with her to work to make sure that communications improve and move in the directions that she's trying to achieve.
Thank you, colleagues. Dr. Goldson will now hear your budget presentation for FY22.
Thank you. I'd like to say welcome to our CFO, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Michael Herbertman, who will be joining me in the presentation, who will be assisting in directing the slides, and to our business management team for helping us to get to this point today and for all their work around creating the budget books that you will receive electronically at the conclusion of this meeting. Good evening. Tonight, I will be proposing a budget that is different from what you would normally experience. As this pandemic continues to change our educational delivery models and impact our revenues, it is critical that we do not get sidetracked from our ultimate goals of improving academic achievement and closing the resource and achievement gaps. So where are we? The fiscal state of the school system is uncertain. The state, county, and federal government all project revenue losses due to COVID-19. However, thanks to high online sales and other factors, these losses are now projected far lower than initial estimates released early in the pandemic. We remain hopeful that the General Assembly will take needed action in January to continue its progress on funding equity. As a reminder, both the House and the Senate passed a bill last March based on the principles outlined by the Thornton and Kerwin Commissions. This was a dramatic stride towards sufficient and equitable funding for Maryland schools. However, However, the legislation was vetoed in May, during a time when the state was projecting revenue losses more than three times larger than their late, last rev, revised projections. We are hopeful that in this improving economy, equitable school formulas will move forward. While our revenue picture will become clearer over the next few months, we already know that our expenditures will continue to grow. Through our negotiated agreements, employee salaries will increase next year for all of our labor partners. We face rising costs of healthcare, textbooks, and technology. We will continue to maintain our aging facilities and utilize strategies to prevent the spread of COVID-19, even as the funding from the CARES Act runs out. And, we must also address the learning loss experienced by our most vulnerable populations and the continued mental health needs of all of our students. As we construct this budget, requesting continual support from our state and county partners, we have taken our own necessary steps towards austerity and fiscal responsibility. Though we face unprecedented fiscal challenges in this budget, our approach must look beyond a single operating budget deficit. We continue working towards bridging three divides in our school system: shortfalls and inequities in our state school funding allocations, gaps in resources and achievement within Prince George's County Public Schools, and an overall funding deficit in the fiscal year 2022's operating budget. The budget that I present to you tonight is a major step towards bridging all three of these divides. However, we are not able to achieve this alone. This budget counts on forward-thinking at the state level to continue the progress on the Kerwin legislation as the state faces its own fiscal challenges. It also relies on our county partners helping us to stabilize revenue, revenues for next year. On October 21st, 2020, the Board of Education adopted its priorities for this budget cycle, which included mental health supports, academic program innovation, facility safety disinfection, disinfection, and compliance, continued out-of-school learning, and class size. I have also outlined in my plan to continue to transform Prince George's County Public Schools through equity and innovation, including commitments to addressing the digital divide among our students through the utilization of one-to-one devices, internet access, and commencement of a virtual school, mental health supports, properly maintaining and sanitizing our buildings, effectively managing for our schools, and ensuring that our academic and operational programs meet our high academic and fiscal efficiency standards. We are mindful, even as we confront this deficit, that to bridge these divides, we must make transformative changes in our budget and invest, invest in critical areas. The first area is Food and Nutrition Services subsidy in the amount of $15.2 million. First, we're committed to maintaining a food and nutrition program capable of serving all of our students. Food and Nutrition Services runs a separate enterprise fund as required by federal law. The Food and Nutrition Services Fund takes in money through our reimbursement for free and reduced meals and our point-of-purchase food sales. That money, through strict federal guidelines, then goes to pay all of our food service workers and to purchase the food commodities to make the meals. In normal years, the fund is self-sustaining. However, we are currently serving fewer meals than we do when in full-person instruction. And our expenditures are high because we continue to pay all of our employees. The Small Food and Nutrition Services Fund balance will be exhausted in December. I am therefore proposing a $15.2 million operating fund subsidy needed to keep the Food and Nutrition Services Fund afloat. The second area is Building Maintenance Services and Supplies in an amount of $8.5 million. And this budget will maintain our buildings that have been historically underfunded. It is now more important than ever as we sanitize buildings to prevent the spread of COVID. This funding is also needed to replace CARES Act funding for those purposes, which will be exhausted during the current year. And third, we continue to prioritize mental health supports for students, even as state funding for these purposes decreases. We will continue to provide supports to our 65 community schools, 27 middle and K through eight schools, and one high school, along with providing social and emotional lessons during the instructional day. Ensuring that all 207 schools have mental health supports will continue to remain my priority, as evidenced through our each annual budget presented, until we satisfy this commitment. I am grateful that as part of our commitment to investing in student mental health services, we launched in 93 schools that support. And we're also providing new social and emotional lessons, and have added 64 licensed mental health clinicians and seven more mental health providers. The next area I'll focus on is ensuring equity that'll bridge the divide that exists for many of our students. The pandemic has helped to uncover a deep area that we need to access technology to ensure that all of our students are one, are maintained one-to-one and on our technology devices, and we knew that we needed to do this well before COVID-19. Our plan to move towards one-to-one technology was accelerated by the need to educate students virtually. Even before federal legislation was passed to fund technology, we began to purchase critical technology through a variety of fund sources and donations. With the addition, with the additional help of federal funding, we now have had the opportunity to purchase 52,988 student Chromebooks. We purchased 8,000 iPads for our youngest students and provided internet access for over 9,000 families. These devices and access fees must now be maintained in next year's budget. As we demand equitable funding formulas from the state, we also need to turn our focus inwards to determine whether we are funding each school as equitably as we can. This year, we will begin exploring the efficacy of our current school funding model with an elementary pilot program for selected schools. The pilot will reallocate the same dollar amount to eight elementary schools through equitable formula, formula models rather than student-based budgeting. The last area I'll focus on is closing the gap that exists due to state and local funding decreases. It is not possible for us to close this budget gap alone. Our students depend on a continued level of support from the state and county, even as they face revenue challenges. With the current level of uncertainty, we must make reasonable assumptions about how we will be funded. First, we have assumed that the General Assembly will continue the Kerwin blueprint, blueprint grants beyond June 30th. This includes the teacher salary incentive, community school funding, pre-K5 expansion, special education, mental health supports, and other funding that, that the districts throughout the state have relied on over the last two years. This legislation was originally passed two years ago as a down payment, while the more costly Kerwin changes were finalized by the legislature. Because they were only intended as short-term, as a short-term bridge, the allocations are set to expire this June and require legislative action to continue. Second, we believe that the state will act to stabilize allocations by holding districts harmless for their current-year enrollment reductions that are being experienced by districts across the state. While not all students were counted in our official September 30th, 2030 enrollment, 2020 enrollment, we know that these students and more will return next school year and will face additional needs after significant COVID-19 learning loss. Similarly, at the county level, this proposed budget recognizes the difficult financial situation of the county government. Rather than requesting an increase of $29 million as they have averaged over the prior five years during times of escalating enrollment, we are requesting that the county provide the same funding allocation as the current year. Because of our official enrollment is down this school year, that is above the required maintenance of effort amount. But again, we project a sharp enrollment increase after the pandemic and will need sufficient funding to serve those students. Even with all of these assumptions, it still leads us to a reduction at the state level, and a larger federal reduction as CARES Act funding will decrease for next year, and the Teacher and School Leader Grant that we earned ended during the current year. If we assume county and local revenues and hold the use of fund balance to the same level for now, we will encounter total revenue losses of $38.6 million. On the expenditure side, we will add about $80 million for all of our employee compensation and benefits increases, and an additional $438,000 will raise the wages of our lowest compensated employees to the new state minimum wages that will be enacted effective this January 1. I already shared the need to add building maintenance funding, mental health supports, and the Food and Nutrition Food subsidy. As we reconcile the current-year budget gap in June, we paid early on one lease agreement, and as a result, we have one more payment due in fiscal year 2020. Then, we have in fiscal year 2021, then we had in fiscal year 2021, which increases our year-over-year budget by 7.4 million. We are also budgeting 1.1 million for grade-level expansions for our language immersion programs. Finally, as our CARES Act funding dissipate, dissipates, we also need to remove the associated one-time expenditures. This leaves us with a total projected expenditure of $2.39 billion against revenues of $2.28 billion, which causes us to have an operating budget gap of $110 million. We will bridge this budget divide through current-year budget reductions, centralized budget reductions for next year, programmatic efficiencies, reconciling items, which I'll share soon, and additional use of fund balance and laps. I didn't want to wait for next year's budget to initiate measures towards mitigating the deficit that we anticipate for next year. And so in September, I presented to you with three immediate actions. First, we froze all overtime beginning in early October. Exceptions are only made with chief approval and a CEO notification for extenuating circumstances, including the need to efficiently sanitize a building for reopening. Second, we froze hiring for all positions except school-based positions. And third, schools were asked to rework their discretionary budgets. The schools originally created their budgets in February and assumed in-person instruction because it was before the pandemic. In the fall, many schools requested the opportunity to make changes to reallocations. While schools worked on this, we required them to reduce their school-student-based budgeting discretionary amounts by 10%. For context, discretionary budgets make up about 2% of our SBB budgets, which are student-based budgeting, budgets, with the remaining funding going to positions. So they were only required to reduce approximately 0.2% of their overall SBB budgets, which was not difficult. As the Central Office assumed the burden of supplying one-to-one computing devices, and schools no longer had to pay for travel and conferences this year. All three of these measures are to identify current-year savings that can then be transferred to savings for next school year. In all, we are targeting current-year savings of $58 million. This will go towards our savings of $45 million of fiscal year FY22, and a smaller deficit reduction in the out-years. This includes paying off early on some lease purchases, as well as paying the $15 million Food and Nutrition Fu, Fund Subsidy in this year's budget, so we can take it out of next year's budget. During my first budget cycle as CEO, I began the annual process of a deep dive into each centralized budget during the proposed budget cycle. This has been completed each year through more than 20 hours of executive budget review meetings to go line by line through each requested item. Beginning last year, we also started a three-year rotation of zero-basing all budgets. Over the last two years, these reviews have netted $27 million in reductions. And we have been able to redirect that money towards employee salary increases and other key student-focused initiatives. For fiscal year 2022, we dug even deeper. I required each one of my chiefs to present discretionary reductions of at least 10%. Then we reduced even more during our executive budget review meetings. And we also placed an additional emphasis this year on reviewing the efficiency of contracted services. Through this process, we achieved an additional savings this year of $16 million to help reduce the deficit. As we tighten our budget, we cannot continue to close the gap without centralized cuts. We need to ensure that our academic and operational programs throughout the district ultimately benefit our students and meet our rigorous efficiency standards. In alignment with the Board of Education priorities and with my own focus areas for this year, I've directed my staff to collect data on specific programs that will help me evaluate whether the programs are beneficial enough to justify the cost. And over the next few months, we will analyze this data and will present recommendations to innovate programs currently achieving moderate success and phase out other programs that are less effective. I am committed to identifying 2.5 million inefficiencies through this review process. There are several smaller adjustments that we can make based on our analysis of long-term spending trends in centralized budget areas. We require an increase to unemployment of $750,000 based on an uptick in claims even prior to the pandemic. And on the positive side, we also can reduce the amounts that we budget for workers' compensation, utilities, and our required contributions to the state for employment, employee retirement. Finally, we will increase our use of fund balance this year to close the remaining deficit. In the current year, we are budgeting 44 million. For next year, we are adding an additional 40 million, nearly doubling our regular use of fund balance. In doing this, we're planning to use a high percentage of fund balance for fiscal year 2020 with the expectation that we are facing one-time revenue losses. If revenues do not revert to normal levels as expected, we will face an even more formidable deficit in fiscal year 2023. We will increase our use of fund balance this year to close the remaining deficit. In the current year, we are budgeting 44 million as stated, and next year, we're adding the 40 million. Next slide. After this presentation, we will move into the Board of Education-requested phase of this budget process. The first Board of Education public hearing and budget work session will be held on January 19th, and the second, actually no, will be held on, um, yes, it will be held on January 19th and the second on February 2nd. For thorough written responses, Board members are encouraged to submit questions to the Board Office by January 4th for Work Session 1 topics and January 15th for Work Session 2 topics. These due dates will ensure sufficient time for staff to compile and review responses and to submit them back to the Board and public prior to the work sessions. The OBFA Committee will meet on February 16th to finalize its recommendations to the full Board of Education. Then on February 25th, the Board of Education is scheduled to vote on adopting its requested budget. This concludes, um, my Board of Education fiscal year 2022 budget presentation. I look forward to our work sessions in January and our dialogue with our community as we formalize this budget for the fiscal year 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson, um, and colleagues, um, are there any questions at this point? Um, of Dr. Goldson, we, uh, the process, um, that she's laid out, particularly in terms of now coming to Ms. Williams, particularly in terms of Board members reviewing what she's proposing and preparing to submit your questions as soon as possible. uh, so that the OBFA com- committee can do its work and, uh, the Board of Education can proceed. Uh, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I just had a couple of quick, um, comments about the budget. I think it's amazing how you are, um, pulling this together in light of the the uncertainty that we're living through, not knowing when we're going to get back in school and how we're going to get back in school and what that looks like. I think it's incredible. Also in light of the expected, um, deficit, how you're managing that. So I'm very happy to see the thoughtfulness that was put into that. And thank you, Mr. Hertzman, for your leadership on that as well. Um, the, I just had a couple of comments about the food and nutrition fund that you are, um, that you spoke about. Um, there, the one thing that I I've been thinking about the entire time during this COVID situation is how we're feeding students. And I think it's great that we're able to provide food and meals for students in the school system. Um, but there are some families that look a little different than having all kids in school and parents who are also, uh, maybe out of work. Have, and I don't, I would know if you don't need to answer this question, but I think that it's important that we look to partner with other community organizations to feed entire families, meaning if we partner with, uh, um, the county's, um, social services department, the schools could be used as a one-stop shop to pick up food that can feed entire families. Since schools are in all of our neighborhoods, just something that I think should be considered. Um, and I'm glad to see that you heard from the community about the mental health services. I think that is a great effort that you're putting towards that for students. I'm also happy to see that we're looking at something different than the SBB for, um, funding our schools. And I, I'm looking forward to hearing the details about the factors that are going to be used for, um, looking to fund our schools equitably. And I, I trust that you're looking at not only what we're inputting into the schools, but also the output that the schools are achieving. And so, um, great job on, on the presentation, great job on adding our priorities and your, your priorities as well. So thank you very much, Dr. Golds. Great job.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Williams. And colleagues, remember, this was not designed for, um, board member, uh, analyses and comments about, um, the budget. Uh, but we won't try to stop it, but the Dr. Gosson was, was not prepared to, uh, to, to do that. Dr. Gosson, if you would, um, continue to, um, prepare for the, to, to receive questions from board members no later than, uh, January, um, fourth, I think, um. Um, and we'll look forward to the public hearings as opposed to having three, we'll have two this year. So we certainly want the public to prepare to participate with us in those two virtual hearings. This is a very critical and different time for everybody, including the board and the public. This is a very difficult situation, so we're going to need the full engagement of the public in the decisions that we'll have to make as a board. So please take this very seriously to the public. Engage with us. We're going to have to make some hard, difficult decisions as a board, uh, that will not please everyone. Um, and so we're going to need your, your input early and often, so please do that. So thank you, Dr. Gosson, Mr. Hertzman, and the staff. Colleagues, if we could now move to, uh, our consent agenda items and, uh, we'll separate them so that we can treat them, uh, with the attention that they deserve. The first one is item three-one, and I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Boozer Struthers, who is the chair of, um, our Policy and Governance Committee, to please present, um, item three-one.
Right. Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. Um, the, um, maybe for us is Board Policy eighty-one hundred, standing committees and focused work groups, a set of recommendations brought forward to the, uh, committee by Vice Chair Burrows. And the committee, uh, met on November sixteenth. I would like to acknowledge, um, my Vice Chair Rahila Ahmed, uh, committee members, uh, Nina Jackson, Joshua Thomas, and David Murray. Uh, Mr. Burrows, uh, tended as a, a guest to present some changes to a policy that actually this board worked on together quite extensively about a year ago to establish, to reestablish our standing committees and to put into policy, uh, the, the new, um, opportunities for focused work groups. So, uh, there's quite a bit of recommendations here that I would direct the public to, but there are step this evening is a vote to advance this to public comment per our, uh, policy ninety-three forty, policy development. So the, that is the, the vote, uh, in front of us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, colleagues, uh, the, it doesn't require a motion. It is on the floor for discussion to the extent necessary. The vote is on referring the recommended modifications to Policy eighty-one hundred, uh, to public comment. And I see Mr. Burrows. Mr. Burrows.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, for recognizing me. Um, I had accepted some, um, I got some feedback from some colleagues, uh, as, uh, two days ago and yesterday. And, um, you know, Ms. Williams sent an email that I believe everyone was on. Um, and other members have sent, uh, emails. And so I like to, um, to, to move, I like to propose a substitute motion to accept, uh, uh, th- these amendments and to pass the policy and to have a policy take effect immediately with the following, uh, amendments based off of the feedback from my colleagues. Uh, the, and amendment number one, the term of the committee, uh, shall start in July. Uh, members may be reappointed to committees. A board member may chair only one standing committee. Uh, I'm sorry, a board member may chair a standing committee for only two years. The board will meet annually in July to determine committee assignments. And the process will be as follows. Each board member shall submit their top two committee assignment preferences to the board. If there is interest in a committee beyond membership capacity of the committee, the board will vote to determine the membership of that committee. Each committee will be filled by members that receives the most votes. Members that are not elected to their top preference may indicate their second preference to the board. The board will attempt to assign members to their first and second committee choice. New members joining outside of the assigned committee, uh, outside of the assigned period shall be assigned based on, on preference, uh, existing committee vacancies, voluntary transfers, and ultimately by a vote of the board. Uh, amendment two, uh, the chair and vice chair of each committee shall be selected by the board in July after a meeting is held wherein members shall express their visions, plans, and experience, uh, for serving in the position and explain why they believe they would be best to lead their respective committees. Amendment number three, the major amendment there is each committee shall meet, um, at least every other month beginning in July. Uh, in July, the meeting should be used to craft committee's work plan. The committee shall be open to the public. Each committee meeting agenda, uh, must include a section for public comment uh, and a section from our labor partners. And so those are the, uh, you know, but based off of the some of the feedback that I've received from some of the members, uh, I wanted to do my best to, you know, where there was agreement and common ground and incorporate that. Um, and I just wanted to offer this substitute motion, uh, to lay out those three amendments uh, and to say that this would, uh, go into effect immediately. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just a moment. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Um, colleagues, that is a substitute to the committee, um, bu- um, proposal. I need a second so that we can continue the discussion.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Uh, so it's, this is a substitute to the committee's report, colleagues, as made by Mr. Burrows and seconded by Mr. Matt. Um, Ms. Williams? And first of all, before I recognize Ms. Williams, thank you, Mr. Burrows, for reaching out to colleagues and trying to get some consensus on this. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, thank you, Mr. Burrows, for, uh, making the modifications. Um, I just had one question of clarification. When you mean the, um, the policy will come into effect immediately, you mean immediately following community input? Um, or, or what, what are you asking?
Uh, immediately, uh, following the, uh, the meeting today.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, Mr. Matt? Mr. Matt?
It's okay. I pass. I'm good.
Thank you. Any other questions about the, uh, substitute motion? Uh, Mr. Ballantyne?
Thank you. Uh, I guess my question is to my colleague, Mr. Burrows. Mr. Burrow, I, I always count on you to be, um, very clear about the rules and regulations of the board, even when things are, are confusing for many board members and to also get insight even board counsel in many cases. The question I have for you is, um, what is the purpose of, of sort of going around the current policy, uh, and, and passing it today? What, what is the sort of the case for, for not wanting to go to, to public comment based on existing policy?
Yep, uh, the, the, uh, upfront answer I could give Mr. Ballantyne is just to have it to go into place quickly so that uh, we as colleagues can evaluate what we're doing in, in the committees um, and, and have the input of our new members, um, sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Um, Ms. Matt?
Yes, uh, Dr. Thornton, I apologize for the back and forth. I was just trying to think about whether or not I should make this point, but I, I did want to clarify what my motion was in committee because I don't know that it's captured accurately in the letter. Um, the motion I made was I moved to recommend passage of the full proposal presented by Vice Chair Burrows of the three amendments to Board Bylaw eighty-one hundred and the additional amendments mentioned today around a forty-five minute allocation for public comment to the full board of the December tenth special meeting. When I said the, 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 I said, move to recommend passage of the full proposal presented by Mr. Burrows and the proposal that Mr. Burrows offered us, it had a date effective on there um, that notes similarly to what he's mentioning now. So I, I don't, i- in nowhere in, in my motion did I say move it for public comment. Um, and so I, I did want to note that in terms of what I, uh, wh- what is a part of this conversation because I think there is probably more consensus around that timeline. And I had intended and I thought that that timeline was a part of the proposal, which if you look at the proposal, it does show the date effective. So that's just
Thank you for that.
I wanted to mention.
Thank you for that clarification. And as a vice chair of the committee, uh, that is, that is very, very important. Um, Ms., Ms., um, Boozer Struthers and then Ms. Williams.
Yeah, thank you so much, and thank you, colleagues. Um, thank you, Mr. Burrows, for working with other board members. I guess from my vantage point, for me, this is more about process and honoring our policy on policymaking with the public comment and also, you know, the, um, committee reviewed this on a very short timeline, posted to the public in a very short timeline for that committee meeting. And, um, I certainly supported moving it forward, so there could be these discussions, but I do think they deserve more the public process. So the two weeks of public comment bring this back immediately to the next, um, Policy and Governance Committee meeting and then bring it back to the board. So procedurally, I, I just think we need to honor that process, uh, that we, on a, you know, I think we have to honor public comment. I mean, I just think at the end of the day, we, we spent last year um, working hard to bring public comment back in a really structured way. And I just hope we can just not pick and choose which policies need to go back through public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boozer Struthers. Ms. Williams and then Mr. Burrows.
Um, just a couple of quick points of clarification that I'd ask Mr. Burrows to reply to. Um, one is, there is a, uh, one of the comments that I've sent over was regarding the student board member of the board. Um, and it's like, it states that they would be apart in June, but they do not come on board until July one. Um, the first question is what, what do you envision that looking like? And second, um, if we were to make this effective immediately, how do you anticipate handling the, uh, work plans that are already developed for each committee for the rest of, rest of the year? Um, as for the, um, OBFA committee, we have commitments to the, um, CEO with meetings and things like that and responses and things like that. All of that is a part of our work plan. So what is your anticipated? Um, uh, logistics for modifying the work plan? How much time will you allow the new committee makeup to come up with a work plan? Um, I just don't envision that being very smooth, so I would like your input and your comments on that.
Mr. Burrows. And, and I want to thank you, Ms. Williams, for, uh, sending your comment, uh, ahead of time, and that really helped uh, with the amendment that I proposed. See, initially, you're correct. I was proposing that we would set these committees in June. Uh, and based off of your feedback about when the student board member was selected and the motion that I've read tonight, um, we pushed it to July. Uh, and the student board member, uh, you know, will be sworn in by July. And so that was a, as a direct result, uh, of your feedback, and I appreciate that. And I should have known that because I was a two-term student board member, uh, but, you know, you forget things. Um, uh, secondly, uh, you know, we're going to have to work together as colleagues. I mean, I, I respect the work that these committees, uh, have done. Uh, there, there could be a scenario where these work plans, um, stay, you know, probably, they probably won't stay exactly the same, but if you have a great work plan in place and you work with other members, um, to, um, execute that work plan, um, you know, I could see that work plan being a good, solid starting place for these committees. Um, and I could see these committees wanting to steal or adopt maybe everything in the work plan or, or modify some parts of the work plan. Uh, that's my response there. I do want to respond to, um, Ms. Boozer Struthers', uh, uh, statement around public comment. You know, one of the amendments that I'm most proud about, uh, in this is right now, there is zero public comment in our committee structure, none. So, uh, members of the public have no right to be heard in our, in our committees. Now, some great committee chairs, as you all do every now and then, allow, uh, folks to come and testify. Uh, you know, mostly the administration, but what this would do is say, hey, every committee is going to have public comment. Every time we're discussing something, the members of the public have the right to come and share their ideas and, and, and through that public comment, I think, um, you know, our committees will produce better products. Uh, also right now, it, our committees generally is just a conversation between the board and the administration. I mean, under this, uh, under these amendments, we add our labor partners at the table so that as we're discussing transportation, we could have ACE ASME twenty-two fifty up there with our bus drivers helping inform some of the decisions that we're making as we're discussing reopening and and academic affairs and academic achievement. You know, what will it take to ensure that we have zero teacher vacancies, right? We could have PGCEA sitting right there at the table. And so th- these amendments actually increase our level of public comment and our union engagement so significantly.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
I wasn't, I actually wasn't done. I'm sorry. I actually wasn't finished with them because I needed to hear his response in order to get there. And I think that, um, I think that this, the changes to the, to this policy is a little too soon. We've only had this policy in effect for a little over a year. April ninth, twenty nineteen is when this policy came into effect. And we haven't had an opportunity to, um, really see the, the full development of our committees and the outcome that they can achieve. And so I think it would do a disservice to all the work that, um, Ms. Ahmed put in and that Mr. Burrows put in, that Dr. Thornton put in. When we, um, drafted the eighty-one hundred revision to change the committee structure and the focused work groups. Um, and so I think that we always need to have some time to develop. And as far as I understand and I've seen, I haven't heard of any issues with this, with this, um, with this policy that would make it necessary for us to make this change. So I think that we need more time to help develop this, the actual policy to be effective versus going in and changing it with no real reason behind making these modifications, except for the desire of one board member. I have not heard any issues with this new focus, I'm sorry, this new policy that we developed in 2019. So although I had questions, I'm not going to support it.
I'm going to recognize Mr. Burrow's once again, and then we will recognize Ms. Boozers Struthers for her second time, and then hopefully we can vote close. Mr. Burrow?
Yeah, I just want to be clear what this does. This does three things. It says that the Board will democratically select who sits on what committee, that the Board will democratically determine who gets to lead each of these committees. And if an individual wants to lead a committee, they need to come to the Board and say, this is why I'm passionate about this committee. This is what I would like to do if I'm elected in leadership of this committee. And this is how I would work with my colleagues to address the concerns that this committee would, you know, would address. And so it really increases the ownership and collective buy-in around these committee decisions. So that's the first thing that it does. It says that the Board will select who's on each of these committees. If you want to lead these committees, you know, we're not going to have a scenario where, you know, one or two people decide. No, you're going to have to justify why you want to lead these committees, why you're passionate about your content area, in a very open and transparent way. And lastly, it includes public comment. It says, Ed, we've, you know, it says, we will have our labor partners and our community partners at the table with us as we discuss things in committee. And so, Dr. Thornton, I like to just, you know, of course, allow everyone to speak who's buzzed in, but I also want to just call the question as well.
I want to recognize Ms. Boozers Struthers, then we will call the question. Ms. King, if you'll prepare to make sure that you've captured the elements of the motion that we'll be voting on. Ms. Boozers Struthers?
Thank you. I actually did not have my hand raised for a second round, so I will pass.
Okay. Colleagues, we're voting on a substitute to the committee's recommendation, as we've heard summarized. The major parts of which, Ms. King, you can help me. The major parts of which would be, most importantly, whatever change is voted, if it's approved, it takes effect immediately. The second part of, Ms. King, do you have the elements before I try to summarize?
I was actually going to ask Mr. Burrow if he could repeat his amendments that he was proposing.
Absolutely. The term of, you know what? I'm going to try to read this and email this to you at the same time, Ms. King, just to make life easier for you.
If you would just make the motion as opposed to explaining or commenting, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, wasn't sure if you want me to read three paragraphs or if you want me to read the amendments, but I'll just start reading. You know, the amendments are as follows. The Board would meet annually in July to determine committee assignments. The process will be as follows. Each board member shall submit their top two committee assignment preferences to the Board. If there is interest in the committee beyond the membership capacity of that committee, the Board will vote to determine the membership of that committee. Each committee will be filled by members that receive the most votes. Members are, members that are not elected to their top preference may indicate their second preference to the Board. The Board will attempt to assign members to their first or second committee choice. New members joining the Board outside of the committee assigned period shall be assigned based on preference of existing committees, vacancies, voluntary transfers, and ultimately a vote of the Board. The Chair and Vice Chair of each committee shall be selected by the Board in July after meeting is held, wherein interested members shall express their vision, plan, experience for serving in the positions, and explain why they believe it would be best to lead their respective committees. And then each committee shall meet. Then it's, each committee agenda must include a section for public comment and a section for input for our labor partners.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Colleagues, that is the motion on the floor, which has been made by Mr. Burrow and seconded by, I think, Ms. Matt. And Ms. Queen, and then we'll vote.
Yeah, I just want, just to make sure, because I heard all the comments, but even though it started immediately, it goes into effect immediately, but none of the changes starts in July, because I think I heard a comment about, like, for instance, the OBFA Committee, the recommendations we had made to Dr. Gosin. But that doesn't change the committees we have now by, you know, because that does, as Boyd Member Burrow said, the change doesn't go into effect until we actually vote on a new committee member in July. So it doesn't change what we have now, and I just want a clarification of that.
That's not my understanding, Ms. Queen. My understanding is the motion would immediately require the Board to change the committee composition right now. Is that right, Mr. Burrow?
So the policy would go into place immediately, however, the work plans, imagine those work plans being thrown out.
Oh, it's not, it's not, what I'm being, what I'm trying to clarify.
My sentence.
That's fine. The membership of the committees would be modified immediately. I'm just trying to get clarity on that, then we can vote. Is that right? Is that right, Mr. Burrow?
So the policy would go into effect immediately. However, those work plans that OBFA has worked on, none of that will change until July, like Ms. Queen mentioned.
Right.
Okay, so I guess I'm a little confused, because, Ed, if you read your statement again, it says that the committees are going to be voting on that in July. This is like December, and so that, so I understand what you're saying. But from this, I understand a policy can go into effect right now, which is fine, a policy going into effect. But with the statement you just read, it's saying that committee decisions and the board members will vote on it in July. So that's what I just want clarification on.
Yep, so moving forward, the policy will start in July after it goes into effect now. So like, you know, after this vote, and, you know, the Board chooses its committees, there will be a work plan and organizational meeting in July where this process will play out.
That's good, Mr. Burrow. My only question, and then I'll call the vote, is right now, the OBFA Committee, after the Board votes, if the Board voted tonight, would the committee composition change before the Board begins this budget process in January?
I wouldn't know that. It would be up to the Board. The Board can choose to keep it the same. You know, yeah, it would be up to the Board.
Okay, all right, colleagues. I hope you understand what's being said. I'm not clear about it, but let's proceed with the vote. Ms. Shepherd?
Yeah, I'm not like, I'm not clear either, because if it's affected in July, then it should not be affecting anything of the compositions of the Board committee members who are already in there. So I just want to make sure I clearly understand that, so I can make the right decision.
Yep, so this would go into effect immediately. If the Board chooses to keep the committee compositions the same, it can do that. If the committee chooses not to modify any of the work plans until July, the Board can do that. This puts all of those decision-making options under the purview of the Board.
Okay, colleagues. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Adams-Stanford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozers Struthers?
No.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Harris? I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, I did not hear your vote.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams, I didn't hear you.
No.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton?
No.
Six nays, eight ayes.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion passes, and that is a modification to 8100 to go into effect immediately. We will now move to item 32, which is a recommendation regarding proposed legislation. Ms. Boozers Struthers, would you please introduce that item?
Thank you so much, Dr. Thornton. So if everyone recalls at our last board meeting, we, sorry, I have to get my screen set up here. We, as the Policy and Governance Committee, put forward our policy recommendations for Annapolis for this 2021 cycle. And we had three that we brought forward, and it was proposed during that discussion to add a fourth, which was on the issue of returning to a fully elected Board. Two, there are currently two delegates put forward their own recommendations. That was revision PG 502-21 introduced by Delegate Ivy and PG 503-21 introduced by Delegate Watson. The committee met and compared these two proposed legislation. And after our discussion, we unanimously voted to recommend that the PGCBS Board of Education take a position of support for PG 502-21. That's the Delegate Ivy proposal. And that we would take a position of opposition regarding the PG 503-21, the Delegate Watson proposal. So that is in front of us to add that as our fourth legislative priority, which we would then put those four priorities as we operate, you know, the public about our priorities in Annapolis this session.
Thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, that is a committee report not requiring a second. There was, recall, there was consensus from the Board on the priorities, with the exception of the elected Board one. And so I don't think there was a need for, there's a need for the Board to debate any of them, except the elected Board one, because there was unanimous agreement from the Board. I inappropriately ruled parliamentarily that a discussion of the elected Board issue required a two-thirds vote of the Board, when it only requires a majority vote. So as Ivy, the vote tonight is on whether the Board will adopt that part of the committee's report, which supports PG 502-21, which is the Ivy proposal for an all-elected Board. So if we could limit our discussion to that, and that is the motion that is on the floor. Is there any discussion before we move to a vote, Ms. Matt?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just a point of clarification that what we're voting on right now are the positions of the two bills, and the piece about the elected Board is item 3.3, not this one.
That's right, but I'm merging them, because what it really is, is the Board has consensus about the others, because we voted on that. I shouldn't say we voted on that, was consensus about that. The only difference was about the elected Board issue. It was a parliamentary issue, which I inappropriately ruled required a two-thirds vote. So we now would be voting on adopting the committee's position, which is support for 502-21, which is the Ivy recommendation for an all-elected Board of Education.
Mr. Chair, I would say I have, I wanted to make an amendment on item 3.3. So are you saying now that we're merging 3.2 and 3.3?
Well, if you're going to make an amendment, then I won't do that.
Okay, thank you.
So colleagues, we are going back to item 32 as a separate item, which is the Board's legislative priorities, which now includes the elected Board recommendation coming from Delegate Ivy 502-21. That is what the motion is on. And I don't see any other comments regarding this, so I'm going to ask Ms. Berkeley to please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Adams-Stanford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozers Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Abstained.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mrs. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
No, no.
Mrs. Williams?
Abstained.
Dr. Thornton?
Abstained.
Three abstains, two nays, nine ayes.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Boozers Struthers, for that, and that modifies our legislative, no, it's a position of Board of Education to support Delegate Ivy's proposal 502-21. We will now move to item 31, which is proposed legislative priorities. This is a carryover from our previous meeting. Ms. Ahmed, you have an amendment to what we've done?
Yes, Dr. Thornton. I, would it be appropriate for me to offer the friendly amendment to Mr. Burrows, since he made the motion? Or does a motion need to be made with the amendment?
You can say it, Ms. Thornton.
Okay, well, I'd like to add a friendly amendment to the motion that Mr. Burrows had placed on the floor at the previous board meeting to add voting rights for the student member of the Board for Prince George's County as a legislative priority for our Board.
Second.
This is a friendly amendment to the legislative priorities, which would have full support or full voting rights, for the full voting rights, with no restrictions regarding our student board member. That is seconded by Mr. Burrows. Well, actually, you accept it as a friendly amendment. Colleagues, that motion is on the floor. It's an additional legislative priority. Any discussion?
A point of, I guess, clarification, Dr. Thornton. Given that we have two new board members, it might be helpful for Mr. Burrows to kind of restate what his motion was, and then indicate if he's going to accept the friendly amendment.
He seconded it, so he does plan to accept it. And, Mr. Burrow, you might want to clarify, or you or Ms. King, what is being modified?
Sure, it's simply what we just approved, and that is to have a, you know, fully elected Board with Ms. Ahmed's amendment to include full voting rights for the student board member.
Okay, so to, especially to Ms. Stafford and Mr. Harris, for clarification. It is, the last time there was debate about whether or not the Board would add an elected Board position to our legislative priorities. We clarified that now, it's been added. Support for Mr. Ivy's position. And now we are adding to Mr. Burrows's motion, full voting rights for the student board member as a legislative priority. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
No discussion?
Ms. Boozers Struthers, just a moment.
No discussion?
Well, I asked for a discussion, and please proceed with the other.
Oh, my apologies. I guess I missed you say that. I think I would like some history on this topic of the reason why student board member, why there are certain things that the Board votes on that the student board member has not in the past. And I, of course, had assumed there were some protections for the student board member around that. And I guess... and I guess that would be good to get a, you know, reminder of, of why the student board member doesn't vote on everything, like personnel contracts, et cetera.
I don't think, uh, I'm not arguing against it. Um, I would think that, um, there are some liability issues, but I, I don't want to argue against it. It may be something that the board might want to get some additional information on and, and, uh, deal with it in this next meeting, but it's up to the board. Mr. Ahmed?
Yes, Dr. Thornton, I do want to note, um, that the Anaronda County does have a student board member that has full voting rights, and so this would not be a precedent that we are setting. Um, it has been in place for them for a number of years, so it, it, just to give folks some context, but I'm sure that, um, Ms. Jackson would probably have more insight, um, if there were any other questions about specifically how this could play out, or even Mr. Burrows as having been a previous smob, or even Mr. Murray as being the previous state smob, um, on this.
Okay, uh, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I, I would be happy to speak on this. Um, thanks, Rehilla, for that. Um, yeah, like, like Rehilla said, the Anaronda County student board member, um, has had full voting rights for, um, since I was in, like, elementary school. I think, um, Montgomery County now does as well, and, you know, there's absolutely nothing precluding the student board member, um, from having those rights, and I think it's just kind of like a natural, um, evolution on school boards as we recognize more and more every year how, how vital that student voice is. Um, when I was a student member on the state board, uh, I was actually able to lobby for a bill that got the student member on the state board to vote for budget, um, starting with the member after me, um, and so I think it's really just a natural evolution and progression towards it. It is something that I'm really excited about, um, us lobbying for in Annapolis, and I'm hopeful that this is something that we can pass unanimously tonight, um, to send a message to our current student board member and all of our future student board members, that we want them to be fully and equal colleagues of our board.
Thank you, colleague. Uh, Mr. Mister, I thought I saw Mr. Burrows's hand, and he went away. Um, okay, uh, Ms. Queen?
Yeah, um, I just want to make one statement. I think it's a great, I, I believe it's a great idea, and I just think, um, and one of the things I do want to add to that, you know, we talk about putting our kids first for a change. I, I just believe it's so important, and one of the things is when we do make a lot of decisions, you guys know, even me, I struggle with it, because we're, some of the decisions we're making are on students, and what better than know what a child is thinking than a child? When things happen to them in their school, whether they get suspended or they have to go things, I would rather have the voice of a student who can speak on behalf of other students, no offense to, to listen to a lot of you guys. So I'm so glad that they have the opportunity to be able to be in that vote.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Uh, Mr. Burrows, and then, um, Ms. Queen, Ms. Jackson, and Ms. Williams.
Uh, Mr. Burrows, Mr. Burrows? One thing that I, I want to do is echo what Mr. Murray said, is that Anaronda County has had this for a long time. Uh, Montgomery County student board member can actually vote on budget, and I can tell you, I know that our student board members here in Prince George's County are as smart and as thoughtful and, uh, and are as capable as the Montgomery County smob and the Anaronda County smob. I think our smobs are better. And, well, I'm not done, Dr. Thornton, I have the floor. Um, uh, and, and, and so, you know, by doing this, we're recognizing the intellect in Prince George's County public schools, and I think we absolutely should do that. Um, um, and so I just wanted to, to, to raise that, that is, is, is happening really all across the country, is happening in the state of Maryland. Our students are just as capable and just as smart, just like Ms. Queen said, when it comes to budget decisions, it's our student board member interacting with students every single day, a- and, and I, I, I trust them to help make informed decisions, so I just wanted to raise those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Jackson, and then Ms. Williams, and then we'll hopefully vote. Ms. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, I want to, um, thank, uh, my colleagues, uh, Board Member Murray, um, Board Member Burrows, and especially Board Member, um, Ahmed, for even putting forth this friendly amendment. Um, I think that it's important to note a few things. The fact of the matter is that one of the glories and honors of being the student member of the board is that out of all of us, out of all the sitting board members, the student member is the only member who is in these schools, um, undergoing the direct, uh, result of the policies that we pass and the decisions that we make. And I think that is one of the most vital things, or one of the most vital elements here, um, about our board. Um, I think that it's important to note, the student members of the Board of Education represent one of the, um, largest constituencies out of us all, um, and one of the most important stakeholder groups, um, in our school district. I think we're doing nothing but a disservice to not only the students, but to the service of the student member of the board by essentially kneecapping and, and, um, inhibiting their ability to full, uh, to fully serve in their capacity as a board member. Um, you guys regard me and those who serve in my position as equal in stature and equal in, in status as a colleague and as a board member. Um, but I don't know how that can be said in good faith, um, with authenticity and, and, um, genuinely, when there's been many items that have came to the board, and I haven't, I didn't have the opportunity to vote on them. I'm sure I can lend my voice and lend my input on certain matters, but the fact of the matter is, you, you guys can totally choose to disregard them if you wish. Um, this is not an isolated, um, initiative or an i- i- isolated, um, wish or desire. Um, many of my colleagues, as far as student board representatives and student members, are pushing for the same, um, pushing forward and, and want the, the same, um, ability to vote on the matters that we're inhibited from doing so. And so I just want to, again, thank my colleagues for lending their voices, um, and, and, and thank Ms. Ahmed for bringing forth this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Williams, and then hopefully we can vote. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, um, Dr. Thornton. Um, I'd just like to hear from our, um, attorney on what our student board members can and cannot vote on. You on, Mr. Rogers? I mean, Mr. Thomas?
Now?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so the current, uh, categories on which the student board member is not, or not permitted to vote are, um, student appeals, budget matters, personnel matters, and there's one other category, I believe, that, that escapes me off the top of my head, that I can verify that, um, and look it up in the statute. But those are at least three of the principal areas that are where I know that the student board member is not permitted to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And so, um, I so appreciate the voice that our, our intelligent student board members always bring to the board. I think that we have the most phenomenal students in the state of Maryland, and I want to brag a little bit in the United States, especially from, from our black and brown children. Um, and so I do respect and appreciate the voice that the students bring to the Board of Education. I also want to remind everyone that this is a two-point-three-billion-dollar enterprise that hires probably, I think we are either first or second in hiring people in the community and around the DMV area. Thirdly, we are also responsible for making decisions that will impact not only the livelihood of the twenty thousand employees that we have, but also a hundred and thirty-six thousand students. And so I love the fact that we can hear the voice of the students, and what they are capable of voting on, I think it's great to have their input on that. Um, so I just want to just bring that to the attention of the board and the community, how important and how large this, what we're doing here as a board member is every day. I mean, we are making decisions that are based on our abilities to lead, our experience in business, and the effects that it may take if we vote. It's not really the right way, so if the vote ends up not being the right vote because of, uh, for lack of a better term, inexperience of someone who is in high school. Not to diminish what that the student, what board member brings, but the fact that we are talking about negotiations, contracts, um, we have schedules and things like that. I think that they, they can bring their voice to the table. But also, I wanted to make a point that when we're making these decisions, I know, me personally, I take my time and I review all the information that's given to us for the board, but it also takes some time in between the meetings to fully understand what we're doing and the actions that we're taking. And so I just want to be cautious when we bring things to the board for an action that hasn't had enough time for the board members to review and to get clarification, you know, for those actions, because the decisions that we make are highly important for this large organization that we are leading. So I think we have to be very cautious when we bring stuff to the board, and the entire board hasn't, I had an opportunity to review and ask questions.
Alex, you, you may put your hands down. I, I have, uh, noted your, your request to speak, so you may put your hands down. Um, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Harris, and Ms. Ahmed.
Oh, can I speak as well?
Uh, yes, Ms. Adams, and, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I, I just actually, uh, thanks for your remarks, Ms. Williams. So I just, just a question for clarification. You do believe that our students are extremely intelligent, they're very capable, you think that they are, uh, they stand out as the, as the smartest in the state, yet you, uh, with all that being stated, still don't believe that they, that they, through their process of electing their representative, who sits on our board, uh, so a, a, a vetting process that, that the students, the student government in our county, uh, goes through to elect their representative to our board, with all that being stated, you still think, uh, with them being the most intelligent students in the state, that they don't have the right, uh, to vote on all matters that we do, um, simply because, uh, I think you said because of their inexperience due to being in high school? Just, I just want to make sure that's clear, because that's what I heard you say.
Ms. Williams, uh, well, Ms. Williams, please. Mr. Thomas, you, you finished?
Yeah, it was a question to Ms. Williams, just for, just for my understanding.
Uh, I'll, uh, Ms. Williams, when you have a second chance to speak, then please respond. Mr. Harris?
Okay. Uh, surely, thanks for calling on me. Um, again, I just want to echo everything Ms. Jackson's saying. I, I personally welcome the, um, the perspective. Like she said, she, she was vetted by, by the county, by the students, and she is the mouthpiece for our students. Uh, therefore, I fully support, uh, her, the perspective she brings, the experience that she will bring, and, 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 and her, her vote at the table.
Thank you, colleague. Um, Ms. Ahmed?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, I just wanted to, uh, emphasize and request that we avoid making ageist statements. Um, I think this hit me pretty hard, uh, because, uh, I ran for this position when I was eighteen, and I faced that a lot. I'm sure that that may have been the case for other members of this board that also ran. Um, and also, uh, it, just the sense of, just because of your age, doesn't mean you don't have really important and valuable lived experiences. So, um, I heard something that was said that made, uh, uh, me feel some type of way, and so I just wanted to, uh, request that we try and avoid making, uh, statements that, that could hit people in that way, because it hit me in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, my colleague. Um, and I think we have one more speaker, and then, well, okay, Ms. Adams Stafford?
So I just want to say, I echo the thoughts of my colleagues in supporting a student member of the board having full voting rights. You know, across our country, we're moving towards being more culturally responsive and providing students with a sense of agency. We say that we want students to have critical thinking skills, to have opportunities to affect their communities, yet when we have the opportunity to do that, we're shooting it down. When we talk about students, especially students of color, having this sense of institutional belonging, that they can change matters in their community, what better opportunity than to give full voting rights to our student board members, like my colleague, Ms. Jackson? So I, I fully support this, and we need to demonstrate to our students what we're preaching, that they are capable of making and affecting real change where they live.
Thank you, colleague. Um, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, Mr. Valentine, and then Ms. Williams. And then I do, I have you, Mr. Murray.
Just, uh, two, two points of clarification. One, right now, we're just, we're just voting on the amendment, not on the full legislative priorities, just to be clear?
No, we are, uh, Mr. Burrows accepted the, the friendly amendment, so this is in addition to, to, um, to his motion.
So this, this vote is on the full legislative agenda?
That's right, as amended.
Okay. Second question, uh, ironically, this is discussion, similar discussions are happening right now in Philadelphia, uh, where students are being asked, uh, are, are coming together asking to have full voting rights. And a question that came up, uh, that I, I was, I, again, I'd like Mr. Thomas to, to clarify, particularly in the Philadelphia instances, is whether, um, if students did have full voting rights, that in the event that the, uh, the Board of Education was sued, that those students could be party, uh, to lawsuit, or named in a lawsuit against the school district, uh, in case that the board is, isn't it? Just a clarification.
Okay, so the student member of, of the board is the same as, as anyone else. She, she or he is a, a member of the Board of Ed, subject to these, um, exceptions on matters for which they can't vote. But more importantly, as board members, you all have, um, it's immunity, immunity from personal liability in the event of, of a lawsuit. So that's not really something that board members have to worry about individually, even if you were named, you know, as the individual person in the lawsuit, we would certainly invoke the defense of immunity.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Williams, Ms. Mur- Mr. Murray, and then Ms. Queen, and I think, uh, Ms. Jackson, and hopefully we can vote. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Let me, let me clarify something. At the age of sixteen, I graduated from high school, and so there were things that I wanted to do because I was a high school graduate. I could not do certain things because there was an age limitation, and because there were all of these other responsibilities that came with what I wanted to do. One was to get a bank account on my own without my parents' permission. So I could not do that because of my age, and it was put in place because of those protections. Secondly, the decisions that we are talking about, that the student board member cannot vote on, are things that has to do with, that are a little bit, um, that involve the employment of other, of adults. And so when we're making these decisions, especially when it comes to negotiated contracts, um, and, and the like, a student board member may not have that experience. And so I did not say anything about the age of the student, I just said the experience and the exposure of it. And so if we can, I think that when we're making these decisions as a board on those things that affect the, um, personnel, I think that we all have to make thoughtful decisions about that. And if we have the ability to train our students in negotiated contracts, and what the information is being presented to us about the negotiation, albeit she can vote or he can vote. But I think that we should, on this issue, take some time, get all of the information to clarify the impact of having a student board member participate in those things, because this is the first time I've heard about it, and you're asking me to vote on something that I've had no opportunity to get clarification on. So if we want to wait until next year to make that a part of the legislative policy, fine. We have an opportunity to, to have a thoughtful conversation and make a thoughtful decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Colleagues, I see three more people wanting to speak. Hopefully, we can then move to a vote. I think everyone has gotten their position out, uh, hopefully. Mr. Murray, Ms. Queen, and Ms. Jackson, and then we can, and I see Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll try to agree, but I did want to echo the fact that, um, for me as well, those comments really struck me the wrong way, um, particularly as a student board member. Um, I can vividly remember when I asked my board, the state board, to support full voting rights for the student member, and I'm not sure that I would have been able to handle it as gracefully if my colleagues talked about people's lack of experience, um, so recklessly as they did when we don't, we don't question the, the experience of our adult members on the board. We, we don't run through their resume and whether they deserved to be on the board, but because a person is a student board member, we're going to, you know, somehow treat them, treat them differently. Um, that really rubbed me the wrong way. I, I'd also like to mention, we talked about what are going to be the impacts. Um, the impacts are, it'll, it'll take eight votes to pass a motion. So i- if someone would like to be upset at how a student board member votes, they're going to have to have at least seven colleagues voting in the exact same way as them to pass a motion. I mean, that's what we're talking about here. So this one vote of the student board member is not somehow going to invalidate my vote or anybody else's vote, um, and it's something that I think is frankly overdue. Um, and so, you know, that board member can feel free to vote no, because I'm, I'm more than confident that a majority, and hopefully a very big supermajority of this board, um, is going to support the right of our student board member to be respected, um, as a full colleague of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, colleague. Um, Ms. Queen, and Ms. Jackson, and Mr. Burrows, and then please, colleagues, let's, let's vote. Ms. Queen?
Thank you so very much, um, Dr. Thornton. I just want to say, I just think it's very important, you guys, for us to, um, listen to our- I just want to say, I just think it's very important, you guys, for us to listen to our kids. Our kids are very intelligent and very smart. As I deal with my grandkids and my kids every day, even with the technology I was having earlier, I couldn't even get on to my board computer here. And I was almost about to get ADHD and just drop it and get mad, because I was getting frustrated because I couldn't get logged in. But then my child here, my college student, you know, she helped me walk through it, and we were trying to figure out, how do I get logged in? And it was her to help me to take, Ma, send it to my email, and let's get on my computer, because I couldn't get on to my board computer, and there's nothing wrong with my Wi-Fi, it works on her computer. So sometime, our kids are very much more smarter and have very much more patience than we do even as adults. And I say that because even in our households today, I really believe that we have to realize that this is a different generation, you guys. And our kids are very different, they're coming out smart, from the babies, they're coming out smart, they're knowing a little bit more. And we got to stop undermining them and think that they're not as intelligent as they are. In many households, one of the biggest problems that parents had with the failure of their kids is because they're not listening to their kids. They're not taking into consideration their opinions, and that's when it fall out with the children that's growing up in today's world. This is, as I say it constantly, we're raising a different generation of kids. They're more smarter, they're more intelligent, and we have to realize that we have to just let them sit at the table and listen. We can no longer dictate to this generation, because they don't take our dictatorship. I think in our reality, that some of our adults that are older, and I'm not going to go into age, maybe need to be listening to this younger generation, because they can help you know that things have changed. And so I disagree, and I believe that the student board members do need to be a part of it, because we're making decisions for them and their future, and some of their decisions are far more better than some of ours. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Ms. Queen, for your comments. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Burrows, and then hopefully we can vote. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I guess one of the things I want to speak to is this notion of experience. Experience isn't something that we're born with, it's not innate. It's not something that, you know, just comes to us in a sense. Many of you all are much older than me, sorry for the much. But you guys weren't born with the knowledge of negotiating contracts, you weren't born with the knowledge of, you know, managing budgets. I think the fact of the matter, the point that I'm trying to speak to is that if a candidate for student member of the Board of Education understands the weight of the work that they're going to be dealing with, that they know they're going to be sitting in the room and working with colleagues on labor negotiations or divvying out our very large budget, they can then prepare for that. This idea that, I mean, the student member can't be prepared for the role that they're stepping into, or that they don't know what they're stepping into, or they're going to be burdened by the weight of the work, is profound to me. And one of the things I just want to leave you all with is that what I'm hearing is we're willing to let students in the room, but not willing to let them sit at the table. We're having this perceived idea of, oh, we want you to state claim on your education, we want you guys to have a say, but not too much of a say. We don't want you to have too much control. And I just, I just want us to really sit with that and consider that that we're letting a student, student member, sit at the table, we're prohibiting them from voting on certain items, even though they have a profound effect on their education.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Colleagues, we have two more speakers, and, well, I would ask for your patience on this, colleagues, Mr. Burrows, and Shepherd, and Mrs. Boozer Struthers, and we do need to vote, colleagues. Please, Mr. Burrows, and Shepherd, and Ms. Boozer Struthers, and let's vote. Mr. Burrows?
A couple of things I'll say. I'd like to echo Mr. Murray's point in that one thing that I know is that one member, or two members, or three members cannot pass a motion of the board. And so in order for the student board member to accomplish anything, he or she's going to have to get seven other members to agree with them. And so it's not like, it's not like she's interviewing for chief executive officer, she's interviewing to be a board member, and she can't pass anything, seven of us agree. And it's hard to get seven of us to agree on anything. So it's going to be a momentous task for anybody. So that's one point that I would like to say. Ms. Jackson talked about experience, you not being born with the experience, not being born with experience. I can tell you, not everyone's born with common sense. And I've sat on this board longer than everyone here, and I can tell you that I've seen scenarios where our student board member has exercised more common sense than adult members. So age isn't always a determining factor about what's good and what's not so good. So we ask ourselves, who do you want making decisions related to the budget? Do you want a high school student making a decision? Or do you want a rocket scientist from NASA like Mr. Harris, or NASA board certified teacher like Ms. Adam Stafford, or a teacher like Mr. Murray making decisions on the budget? Or community activists like Ms. Queen, or a vice president like Mr. Montero making decisions on the budget? And my answer is, I want a combination of everybody. I mean, we all come from a very diverse backgrounds, and we all bring something different. And what the student board member brings, now, Ms. Jackson, I might feel differently if it was five student board members, you know? But it's not, it's one. It's one student board member. And I want that student voice, in a substantive way, making decisions of what programs go where and why. And especially around, you know, some of these appeals. And so I think that's the beauty of having a diverse board. I think we have one. I think it's important that we give our student board member the opportunity to weigh in. And once, and you say, you'll need eight of us to do anything. And that's, the only thing that we can all do with that is mostly just adjourn the meeting. So I think we'll be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Please, colleagues, Ms. Shepherd, and Mrs. Boozer Struthers, and let us vote. Ms. Shepherd?
Yeah, I think I agree with a lot of my colleagues, where they talk about when adults, we as adults, we undermine the capability of young people. And when they say experience, sometimes I get confused, because a lot of us have different experience, how we were raised. The challenge is that we have experience. Either we come from low income, no parents, it's, 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 so the experience, to me, confuses me. And yes, we undermine what our young people are capable to do. And because we don't allow them, because we think that age is a limit, and honestly, it is not. It all depends what the young person had experienced and how they have been raised. So I, I think as a new board member, I was confused to why some of our items, our student board members were not able to vote. And I'm still confused now, and nobody has been able to explain that. So I want you to know, Ms. Jackson, I believe the young people like you are the future of us. And you are as smart as they can be and capable of making a decision on hiring, on voting on all the items. But I want you to know, what I worry is protection for you. I want to understand why these rules were set up, and why would they, before I make a decision? Because I don't want nothing to come your way to stop you for your future, or any of our young person. There's nothing that should, that as adults, we really trying to protect our young people. We need, I need to understand, why is it that we were not allowed them to vote? Because the whole thing about them not voting, I, they can, they do have the experience.
Thank you, colleagues. If we could, well, Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Thank you so much for recognizing me, because I did ask for us to get into this discussion. And I really appreciate hearing from everyone. And as what we're doing here is, we are making the legislative priority recommendation. So I hope our delegates and senators are listening to this conversation as well. But I do sit firmly, I think where my colleague, Ms. Shepherd, is sitting right now in this. But that will not prevent me from voting yes on our full, all of this for our priorities, because of the blueprint for Maryland's future is just way too important to me. And as I recognize that after this meeting, I am no longer chair of this committee, I just want to say that this past year as vice chair and chair and working beside, alongside of you, Dr. Thornton, has been an honor of a lifetime. So I just want to thank you. And I will continue to do this lobbying work in Annapolis on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. And now let us move to Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. So it's a valid question posed, certainly. The question of, well, you know, when this guy, these guidelines around the student member voting were crafted, there's a reason why there were certain restrictions on what the student member can and can't vote on. I would say to you that the answer to that question is much more simple than what we're making it out to be. This position for Prince Rogers County specifically originated from the 90s. And I can tell you now that the thought in the culture surrounding young people having power, and young people having institutional power, is wildly different than what it is now. I can tell you, I mean, you can look through history for a myriad of examples of adults, older people, people with institutionalized power, being scared of giving up that power. And undoubtedly, when you allow a student member to vote, when you allow someone who's for the most part under the age of 18, a minor, to vote, I, people are going to raise their eyebrows. And I just want to raise that as, I mean, just as a possible consideration for you all to just consider.
Thank you. Ms. Berkeley, the, I want you to call the roll, please. The vote, colleagues, is on our 2021 legislative priorities, as amended, with board support for full voting rights for the student member of Prince Rogers County Public Education.
Dr. Thornton, just a point of clarification, it's just the one priority that the board will be voting on tonight. The other four were adopted at the previous meeting, and we do need a second.
Okay. It was made, it was made by Ms. Ahmed as a friendly to Mr. Burrows's motion. So that's, Mr. Burrows makes it, and Ms. Ahmed seconds it. He accepts it as a friendly amendment, actually.
Okay.
All right. So that's what you're voting on, colleagues, just the, not all of the legislative priorities, but the one addition, which is the fully voting rights for our student board member. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Adam Stafford? Mrs. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Yes.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Abstain.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
One abstain, one nay, 12 ayes.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion passes. We'll now move to item 4.0, which is, which is a work group proposal. This is the second reader, we have debated it and discussed it. It is to create a work group regarding support innovation for English language learners focused work group, initiated by Ms. Ahmed and Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson or Ms. Ahmed, would you please introduce the item as a second reader, and then hopefully we can vote, colleagues, because we've already debated it. Ms. Ahmed or Ms. Jackson?
Dr. Thornton, colleagues, this is an item that will hopefully revolutionize the way that we engage and understand our work with English language learners on a board level. I think this is a work that has been a long time coming. I think I'm very grateful for the work that the Academic Achievement Committee has already done in relation to English language learners, and making sure that we're trying to advance what is possible for those students in our system. The hope is that this focus work group can come up with recommendations on a Myrad of issues relating to English language learners in our district, so that we can advance and decrease the achievement gap and make sure that we are creating a Prince Rogers County Public School District that is made for all of our students at the margins. With that, that's okay. With that, Dr. Thornton, I move approval of this item on behalf of me and Ms. Jackson.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been probably seconded by Ms. Ahmed moves it, and Mr. Harris seconds it. As I said, colleagues, we debated this at length in our last meeting. So with your permission, I would like to ask Ms. Berkeley to please call the roll. Ms. Berkeley, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Queen?
Aye.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
And Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
14 ayes.
Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Ms. Ahmed and Ms. Jackson, for your initiative regarding this work group. Colleagues, we'll have follow-up items from our November 12 meeting. Will be posted upon receipt for your information for the public. At this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the board's meeting.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
I would like, I would like, thank you, thank you for recognizing me. I would like to make a motion that the board convene an executive session immediately following this meeting to receive legal advice, discuss personnel matters as it relates to the board.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, colleagues, that the board would reconvene after the public meeting in executive session. It's been seconded. And I don't hear any opposition or problems with it, so let's please vote on that. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, Ms. King, would you please arrange for the board to be able to meet in executive session to deal with those items that were listed by Mr. Murray? Colleagues, it'll take about 10 minutes for that to happen. So we will adjourn into executive session. And I motion to adjourn into executive session. Those in favors of it was unanimous, so we will adjourn in 10 minutes into executive session. Ms. King, you will send login information to board members?
Yes, we'll set that up.
So please look for that, colleagues, as soon as you get these logs back in. It'll probably take about 10 minutes for that to happen. Now, my question is to adjourn the public meeting. So we're adjourning the public meeting. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, all the ayes have. So the public meeting is adjourning, is being adjourned. And to the public, we are now moving into executive session. And obviously, the board will report out to the public on what it does in executive session at a subsequent meeting. Thank you very much, colleagues, and I'll see you in about 10 minutes.
Ms. King? Can you send it to my other email address, because I'm going to have to get on on my daughter's computer, please?
I will.
Thank you.